You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the February 1st, 2023 meeting of the LaPorte County Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the February 1st LaPorte County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. After the pledge of allegiance, we're going to have a brief moment of silence for Michelle Beeler. She passed away recently after over 30 years of service with the LaPorte County Health Department. Mr. Schaefer, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Auditor, roll call, please.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Present.
Commissioner Morzinski.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present. For the record, please show Commissioner Morzinski is attending under a medical exempt, claimed medical exemption.
No, did you have a quorum?
Thank you. Next, we have, we will consider the agenda for this morning.
I'd like to make a correction under 6B operational expense claims. It was $596,834.63, and the amount should be $207,235.29. Make a motion to change?
A motion to change, change the claim amount?
Yeah, I guess it's okay. I just was not familiar with what, why is the change? What, what was, what's different?
The, an incorrect total was originally advertised on the agenda.
Oh, okay. One second, then.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion, a second discussion? No? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Morzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. All right. Nothing else. We will move on to consider the approval of the January 18th minutes as well as the January 25th special minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Morzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Consideration of claims, please, Mr. Auditor.
Commissioners, we have for the period ending January 20th, 2023 payroll in the amount of $1,452,668.44, and operating expense claims, as corrected, of $207,235.29.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second discussion? Very good, roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Morzinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. All right, a public comment, please. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak at this time? Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Reggie Korthals. I'm an environmental regulatory specialist. I was hired by the county to help you come into compliance with the federal MS4 permit. There are a number of changes that the state of Indiana has done. Initially, the stormwater permit was a permit by rule and regulated through rule boards. That was changed, and we became permitted by general permit. The MS4 permit took effect December the 17th. However, item did not get all of the announcements out until July the 5th, so the dates change a little bit. I wanted to make sure that you had these dates, and I'll supply this to you. One of the requirements in the permit is that a public, at a public meeting, we give an update to the way the permit is right now. And so for these, I have the timelines for the permits. Right now, I want to assure the commission that at no time has the county of LaPorte ever been out of violate, or been out of compliance with this permit. And the reason I make that so important is that when you're out of compliance with a federal regulated permit, it can impact your federal highway dollars and your state revolving loan funds. So from my perspective, as your consultant, you will always be in compliance with this permit. Right now, the next important date is April the 1st, and we have to submit the stormwater quality management plan, the updates to any, any of the water quality characterization report. You don't have to submit ordinance updates for about another six months, but we will work together to make sure that this, that we meet this, this date. And if there's ever anything that you want to know about the permit, you've met the program, initial program management requirements, and notice of intent was sent in in the first week in June, and it wasn't really due till July. It's important to try to get your handle on the dates here because this is a five-year permit. And when it was issued on December the 15th, 2021, everyone was supposed to get their NOIs by January. That didn't happen. Your NOIs didn't have to be until July the 5th. So in essence, the first year is six months. So the annual report that goes in will be a report on six months. Please keep in mind that coming in compliance with the permit is to the best extent possible, and it's something that we're always working on. So it doesn't have to be the final, final edition. But as we go through this, I became concerned over comments that were being made about the county not being in compliance, and that as the former item statewide MS4 coordinator, that will never happen. Okay? If you have any questions, feel free to, to check with me.
Thank you for the update.
Yes, thank you, and we appreciate your diligence here and your, your work here helping the county. Good morning, Mr. McCormick.
Good morning, and happy February, everyone. I've been living in the First Ward since 1978. This board is, I hope in that this administration will be more forthcoming with information to our community than the last administration was. I am running for the First Ward as city council member, and I was just wondering what is really going on with the Michigan City Courthouse? The parking is horrible. As a matter of fact, for the regular person who has to go into the courthouse, or even go into Veterans Affairs, or the Health Department, there's no place to park. The workers of, the workers that work there at the courthouse, they take up every parking spot, including any of the handicaps spots. It's not fair to the regular citizens who have to come in and out of that courthouse. I would think that someone would have did a better job with the designs before they went that far. I hope that you guys have a plan to alleviate that parking situation, and that plan doesn't cause a burden to those who are visiting that courthouse for whatever business they do have. There's a lot of rumors that there is a lot of deficiencies in the design and the engineering that went into the renovation. We'd like to know if that's true or not. The public has the right to know. A lot of people was bolstering on how great of a job they did, was constantly patting themselves on the back. Our last county attorney was not forthcoming with the truth on the situation, and I want to know, have you guys even went out there to find out what's going on? We have other workers who work there. They spend a lot of time there. They work in closets, no windows. It's almost as if they are in prison. It's not even a, it's not, it's not a good look at all. These people are dedicated to work for this county, and they're, a lot of them are underpaid, and they don't have no windows. I've never heard of nothing like this before. I wish you guys would get over there if you haven't already, and just give us a report. Let, let the public know the problems about what's going on. We just hear so many problems about that courthouse. And again, the parking is a nightmare, and it needs to be, something needs to be done soon as possible to address that. On another note, I just want to thank you guys for placing me on boards. I wish the Transportation Board would have worked out, but that's no longer existing, so I'm open to any boards, if you do have any that may be coming up, and keep up the good work, and let the people just know the truth finally, because that's what we want to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Hopefully stick around for department head comments. We can give an update on the Michigan City Courthouse situation. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Anyone on Zoom for public comment? All right, seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. We will move on to department head comments. Morning, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Good morning, Commissioner Shawn Fitzpatrick, Director of Facilities. Just some quick updates of what's been going on for the past month. In front of you, you have what we've had as far as closed work orders for the month. My team has been diligent in getting work orders pushed back out of the system as soon as they come in. We've got a lot that we are working on as far as getting the buildings up to a standard of repair. Me personally, I feel as the Director of Facilities, the buildings are our product, and the level of repair and the cleanliness is what we want to ensure is consistent across the board. So I've put some plans in place to kind of work on, on that process. We've got, buildings are being assigned to individual maintenance people, so they'll be like the point person as far as the go-to when things are going on in certain buildings. So we have a kind of heads up on what's happening before things get to the point where they're a major issue and it costs the county a lot of money. We're working toward standardizing our operations, so everything is just consistent. I think that's the best way for us to succeed if we're doing a cookie cutter process across the boards. But with the, as far as the work orders, just from January of this year with about 20 or so working days, we've doubled the amount of work orders from last year and the previous times. So my team, like I said, they're, they're working hard. They're, you know, even with what's going on with the flood, the flood area, which we're not as involved in right now because of the processes going to the contractors, and they'll be working until that's completed. But I get daily updates on the process of, the progress of that process also, so. But just to keep you guys updated with what's happening, we're looking at a couple of things specifically that, that I'm taking the initiative on. I want to put uniform signage within all of the buildings, so I'm looking at the, the difference between if we create a process to do it in-house, or if we farm it out, which one would be the most cost efficient and, and time efficient as far as getting it done. So we look the same across the board. I think we come in, just one building specifically, the higher level building, there are paper signs all over the place, and it really, it's a pet peeve of mine. I think, you know, as a government entity, we should be able to do better than that. So also, I want to work toward getting the uniform appearance. I think every building should have the same level of repair. I think, you know, we shouldn't have broken tiles and peeling paint and dirty ceiling tiles in any of our facilities. So we're working toward systematically doing that. Like I said, having individuals at these locations on a consistent basis, they'll be on top of making sure those things are taken care of before they become a major issue. So just wanted to give a quick update. That was all I had. Any questions or anything you guys want to know about?
You know, I got to say, 62 pages, eight, eight work orders per page, comes out to 496 work orders you've done just for last month. That's very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work.
Appreciate it. And Mr. Fitzpatrick, I'd like, I'd like to say thank you as well, both to you and your team, the, the, under the new leadership, I've seen a dramatic improvement already in some of our facilities, as well as just some of the, some of the morale, not, not just from folks in your department, but throughout the county as, you know, things are getting addressed. You know, it's, 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 it's a breath of fresh air. Thank you so much for all your hard work and, and your team, because it, it's a team effort, and you guys are doing a fantastic job right now.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I do treat it as a team. We meet monthly. We'll be having our second meeting as a department tomorrow, just so everybody is on the same page as far as what's going on in, in every building, because we're not all together every day. We have Michigan City, then we have, you know, buildings that are scattered around the rest of the county. So just so everybody's on the same page, we all, you know, sit around and, you know, I may grab donuts or coffee or something while we'll just talk about what's happening. You know, if there's anything that we need help with, or areas that we need to put more increased focus on, we discuss that as a group, so we can work diligently to get it done. So, thank you.
And I'd like to comment real quick, because Shawn is also on the team for the completion committee for Michigan City, and we have gone around trying to get signage put up, and we're looking at a few things that need corrections as we're falling out of warranties. We're figuring out how we're going to go ahead and start funding and fixing those items. There are a few little kinks in there, and for full disclosure, I mean, it would be wrong of us to give a report right now because we're still kind of like walking through the buildings and figuring out what we need to do. And so as soon as the team gets together and we kind of have like a final checklist of what we need to change around, we will definitely be coming back here, and Shawn will give a report and kind of explain what we need to do over there. So I appreciate everybody's patience. As far as the parking, there has been a parking issue there, but again, we have to remember the fact that we have suffered a flood loss over here. We had eight departments, seven of them that had to be relocated. With that, we did send a lot of people over to eighth, our building that's on Eighth and Wabash, and we also sent people over to the Michigan City Courthouse. Commissioner Haney has done a fabulous job and was able to work out more parking spot for us at the Fifth Third Bank, and we will start probably this week working out with the employees, how we're going to get some employees parking over at those, at that parking lot as well. So please be patient with us. I, I know it's a lot. I mean, a lot of the departments really went through a big change. I mean, they went from one area to another. EMS is at the back of the room, and they went into a much smaller location, and everyone has been really patient, but we do have all our departments up and functioning, and I, I greatly appreciate everybody out there who has helped out in this flood. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any other department heads? Director Lanners.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'd like to request permission to approach the council on purchasing new AED units. The units that we currently have are past their lifespan and are at the point of needing to be replaced, and I would like to approach the council on that, and also some possible additional units. We have had some requests from other departments, and I'd like to present that to the board this, the council this month.
So do we have to do a motion?
Perhaps. Is, is there a contract involved with that?
There.
Was it just a straight purchase, or?
It would be a straight. The ones that we're looking at would be a straight purchase.
Do you know roughly how much the total amount you're looking for is?
It could be at most $70,000.
$70,000, okay.
If they, if they decide to go with the number of units that are being requested.
All right, very good. I don't, then I don't think we need to advertise that, so we can send it, defer it over to the council. If that's a pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve or request to go to the council?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Director Lanners to go to the council for funding for some AED devices and, and some replacement units as well. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Morzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
Mr. President, Commissioners, good morning. Alan Stevens, Superintendent LaPorte County Highway. I met this morning with our truck vendor, and the balance of our, our 21 order for new county highway plow trucks, cabin chassis have hit the ground, they're going to the equiper. We should, you know, expect a delivery in the next two months. That being said, and further discussion with the, the vendor, he's informed me that because of supply chain problems and shortages, that if we have any intention of buying new trucks in the future, that we're going to have to, to make our intentions known before quarter two of this year, and that's, that's going to get us a quarter 125 delivery. We, we've got that much of a lag time, and I think we saw in the, the current order of trucks that's being delivered, there's a large lag time between ordering and delivering. So that, that's probably a discussion we're going to need to have in the near future. If, if we're going to replace more of the outdated trucks, we're going to need to get our order in sooner and later. So I just want to put that on your radar. The second thing I had this morning is because of some personnel changes in the county, there's a vacancy on the US 30 Coalition, and I would like to request appointment to that, just because of the, the nature of how it would relate to, you know, the county road system and our county highway garage in Hannah, and being a South County resident, I feel I'd be a good fit on there if, if that was your pleasure, so.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve him as an appointee to the US 30 Coalition?
All right, I will second that, then. Any discussion? Very good. A roll call vote, please, Mr. Auditor.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Morzinski.
Nay.
Two ayes, one nay. Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens, I believe I heard you correctly earlier, so you're, 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 you're hearing that if we order in Q2 of this year, we, the, soon as we could see trucks would be in 2025?
Yeah, quarter 1 2025.
Okay, yeah, that, that's what I thought. We're seeing similar things with larger vehicles and purchases throughout. I, I, I would certainly entertain a motion to, to authorize our highway superintendent to approach the council to see their intention, see if they have any intention of moving forward with any truck purchases this year, and perhaps come, come up with some information for them so you can present it to them at their meeting later this month.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please, Mr. Auditor.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Morzinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Very good, thank you.
And I'm on the agenda a little later, so I'll come back.
We'll see you soon. Thank you.
I'll wait my turn. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, do we have any other department heads who, who have any comments? Not seeing any here in person or on Zoom. One update for the courthouse in Michigan City, the parking situation. I've been working with, with the owners there of the Fifth Third Bank, or the old Fifth Third Bank, I should say, and I'd like to again say a huge heartfelt thank you to them. They're going to, they're, we're working through and finalizing our zero dollar lease with them. We're just going to provide them insurance, and then obviously if there's some plowing that needs to be done, so the parking lot isn't being used, the, the county will take on the responsibility getting that, getting that plowed. So we'll be addressing that, and we'll be looking at the parking situation and assigning some spots that are definitely designated public only, and the department heads are going to have to figure out unfortunately which, which employees are going to have to walk from, just, it's just on the other side of the library for those who aren't familiar. There's a courthouse, a library in the Fifth Third, old Fifth Third Bank parking lot, so it's on the same side of the street, it's just down, and it is literally the only place we could find within about a 10-block radius where we could actually put employees. So that is unfortunately our only, our only option there, but at least it is a good option. Again, thank you so much to the owner of that building, Mr. Nazir, for, for his generosity toward the county and community. We really appreciate that. Seeing no further department head comments, let's move on to requests. I don't believe we had any requests today. We had nothing under old business.
Old business? Mr. President, in the old business, at the last meeting, we did table our appointment to the Pita Boa Board. I'd like to take that off the table.
There's a motion to remove the Pita Boa from the table? I'm not hearing a second. That will stay on the table for now. Thank you. Any other old business? All right, under new business, we have a consider approval of insurance policy renewal for property insurance for the fairgrounds, real properties, Michiana Insurance. Mr. Jones? Or John Jones, I should say. We have two Jones here today. Thank you.
Which Mr. Jones? Good morning.
Morning.
Mr. President, Commissioners, John Jones, Michiana Insurance. I'm here with Stacy Green from Michiana Insurance as well. And approximately two weeks ago, and I do have some hard copies, if you'd like to see another one, I sent an email to the Commissioners and Attorney Jones with the policy that automatically renewed this year for the fairgrounds properties through Western Reserve. Notably, the renewal premium came in at 28,441. I was able to get some credits applied of $2,286, and the adjusted renewal premium came in then at 26,155. The expiring premium from last year was 24,021, so a difference of $2,134 occurred. However, there was also an 11.2% increase across all properties for the zip code from the carrier.
We did see a significant inflation rate in this county for properties, so yes, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jones? Very good, all right, I'll enter. It's a pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Auditor, roll call, please.
Commissioner Morzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Very good. Next, we have a consideration for the Board of Commissioners to adopt the financial, finance investment policy, which will supersede any previous investment policy and applies to all financial assets of the county. This is what we addressed just prior to this meeting, so everybody should still be familiar with it.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Auditor.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Morzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. All right. Consider highway addendum modifications. Alan Stevens, Highway Superintendent.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Alan Stevens, County Highway Superintendent. As presented to the, the commission, and I believe reviewed by legal, we're just looking at a couple small changes in the county highway addendum to the, the county personnel policy, and this is because of the very nature of our job with, with emergency callouts for various different things, snow removal. We had a lot of vague language in the county highway addendum as it pertained to official policy and the expectation for, for coming in. So I guess I'd like to ask the commission upon their review to approve these policy changes.
Thank you. I've taken a look. They look, they look pretty sound to me. Mr. Andrew Jones, meet your, meet your legal requirements?
I've, I've never been provided this before today.
I apologize. I thought you were CC'd on.
I'm looking at the, the email chain, and I've, I've not, I've not been provided these.
We'll make, make sure you get that. If we, if, if it's the pleasure of the board to adopt it, we'll make it pending a legal review.
Okay, great.
So I'd like to make a motion pending legal review.
Aye.
Okay, all right, we have a motion. I will second that. Any further discussion? No? All right, a roll call vote, please, sir.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Morzinski.
Nay.
Two ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
I'm sure it's fine, but I'll get back to you.
Yep. All right, thank you so much. Next, we have Mitch Bishop, our Next, we have Mitch Bishop, our county planner. Consider bid opening from Community Crossings Grant Paving Project for County Road 400 South between Hupp Road and CR 650 West.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
The auditor should have received, I believe, two bids, one from Milestone, one from Reeve Riley.
Mr. President, I've opened the bid here for the first time from Reeve Riley for this project. The total project construction bid amount as bid by them is $2,170,672.60. I've turned this over to Mr. Bishop. Unless the council or, excuse me, the commission would require further conversation on this. The total construction bid amount from the milestone contractors north, they've left an area blank, but it appears that the total estimate that they have provided is $2,474,405.40.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bishop. Entertain a motion to show the bids are timely received? We have a motion to show the bids that were timely received?
Motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, roll call, please.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Marzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
All right, very good, thank you. Those will obviously be available for review for everyone. You'll go through, make sure they meet all the requirements.
Yes, bid bond is, you know, and all the paperwork is associated, Form 96 and everything else is in there, so I'll make sure that, and I'll get back to you.
Okay, very good. I see on here already, I'm not sure if this is premature, then the next one here is commission to approach the, the council.
Yeah, so that's the local match portion. When I apply for the funds, part of the application is they have to sign a commitment letter, so this is more of a formality, the seeking your permission to attend a council meeting this month for the 50% match of this project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney.
President, or aye.
Commissioner Marzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Consider Union Mill Sidewalk Project, a right-of-way services contract with VS Engineering.
Yeah, this would be for the second phase of that project. This project, we're adding about a mile of sidewalk along Hamilton Streets and Water Streets, which will connect to the pedestrian bridge over Mill Creek into the park there. The second phase of the project, I guess, this is 80% funded through Federal Highway and Endot. This is going to commence in fiscal '24, which would be June, July of this year. The right-of-way services will consist of appraisals, review appraisals, buying services by the engineer VS Engineering. They got a contract for $89,490, and there's also addition acquisition money as part of the grant that would actually pay. We have, there's nine parcels, we have to buy little slivers of property, not quite enough right-of-way in certain areas, so that would cover that as well. That's up to $100,000, and that's all part of this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, sir.
Commissioner Marzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Next up, we have Consider Contract for Senator Dalton for ARP-related matters for the auditor's office.
We've been using them for the last couple of years to, compliance with the feds is important, and we're asking, there's no, I believe, the attorney has reviewed the contract.
I have.
That is the extent of my office's utilization of that firm, but we'd like to continue if, if it's your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call, please, sir.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Marzinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. All right, and it looks like wrapping up here. We have a Consider Request to Pay Sick Time for Retired Employee, Andrew McGuire, EMS
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Want to clarify that I am not retiring.
No, no.
I was asked, been asked several times over the last few days since this came out, but EMT Vance Mercado is retiring after 20 years of employment with LaPorte County EMS. I want to say Vance is always very knowledgeable, very compassionate EMT. I enjoyed working with him for many years, I actually preferred to work with him as my partner for many years. He'll, he'll definitely be very hard to replace, but I'm asking to pay out his sick time. He was maxed at 20, 24-hour shifts, and I do have the funds available within our budget to, to pay for this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please give him our thanks for his service, and I, I saw recently he was given a recognition for service award as well.
Very deserving, yes, yes.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you. Hearing no further discussion?
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Marzinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Apologize for taking liberties, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, very good. I don't believe we have any other business here this morning.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.